Good morning. Thank you so much for having us here today. I just want to do a quick introduction. In September, the State Student Advisory Council on Education was given the honorable task from Commissioner Cardona to conduct research in the 2019-2020 school year on school climate and student voice. The students, being so passionate about these topics, decided to form four subgroups in order to critically analyze and research these two topics. February was their last in-person meeting due to COVID-19, but that did not stop this group. We continued to meet virtually and SACI decided to take the information they had or lack thereof and report and make recommendations to enhance the educational system in Connecticut. On behalf of the Connecticut Association of Schools, we are beyond proud and honored to have such a dedicated group of students to represent our state. I just want to give a quick special thank you to Commissioner Cardona for allowing us to conduct this research and allowing our students to take the time to do this, and also to Glenn Peterson and John Seiler for working with the students throughout this time to get them to where they are today. So I'll quickly introduce our students and then we will move on to the presentation. We have Aliana Castro, 12th grader from Old Saybrook; Beth Christensen, 12th grade from Northwestern Regional High School; Ashley Dung, 11th grade, Branford High; Nina Feinschattine, 12th grade, Hall High; Samuel Gibson, 11th grade, East Hampton High School; Carolyn Ives, 12th grade, Farmington High School; Emmanuel Mokel, 12th grade, South Windsor High School; Tiara Ortiz Diaz, 12th grade, Sound School; Rebecca Wozniak, 12th grade, Orville H. Platt High School; Natalia Wyskowski, 12th grade, Derby High School; and Miriam Khan, 12th grade, Hampden High School. So, thank you to all of our Student Advisory Council members, and I will turn the floor over to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moix, for the wonderful introduction, and thank you to the Board of Ed for allowing us to speak today. My name is Aliana, as Ms. Moix said, and I'm from Old Saybrook High School. I am part of a subgroup that we're calling "Mental Health" under the topic of "School Climate." My group consists of five different members from the SACI committee, and we came together and began sharing anecdotal data about the mental health experiences we've had within our school and hearing data from other students as well. From this information, we decided that we wanted to move forward as a mental health group. We identified a few concerns, and despite not being in school for as long as we thought, we pulled together some final conclusions that we feel will help better not only each district but the state as a whole. Would you mind switching the slide?
Okay, so I'm Ashley, and we had some identified concerns throughout our research. So, the first one is that not all of our schools had a safe place or a safe area, for example, a designated classroom or an area in a library. And this was a concern because a safe place is really beneficial towards kids who may feel overwhelmed and are not sure where to go and if they just need a break. So that was our first concern. Our second was that many students within our school feel as if their mental health is not a priority or feel as if their teachers don't believe that. For example, they see this one teacher say... Some teachers have said to me, "Oh, mental health isn't an excuse for a late homework assignment." So that can be really detrimental and really devalue mental health issues that students go through. Our third and last concern is that many schools don't have follow-ups. So if a student comes to administration with a mental health issue, it's usually addressed the day of and there's no checkup, and that could prove to be very harmful and dangerous. And lastly, we have a misconception that we came up with throughout our research. The misconception is that a lot of people believe that it's the work of the counselors alone to help, or school counselors, to help mental health issues. However, we don't believe that because there are many teachers that have the students more regularly, so it should be a combined responsibility instead of just one specific administrator. Could you change the slide? Thank you.
Just as Ashley has said, we found this misconception that we didn't realize was there before by interviewing teachers. And so a few of the quotes you see on the screen here, the first two specifically kind of point out teachers who feel that it is their job to teach the students strictly academically and that the whole student is more to be cared about from the counselors or the guidance staff's point of view. The third one, we have a teacher here who's saying they use a change in student behavior or academic attitude as red flags for helping identify students and referring them to get more support. So, within those three, we recognize that there is a lot of miscommunication within at least a district but also districts wide from the interviews that we'd conducted. And we realized that there is some kind of disconnect between an understanding of who specifically is supposed to be helping identify students. And from there, we drew the conclusion that it should be more of a district-wide understanding, that it is everybody's responsibility to try to help each student individually. The last quote here brought up something else we hadn't realized before, but this teacher was saying how they've been teaching for 20 years and the last time they talked about mental health and were educated around mental health was when they were certified as a teacher 20 years ago. And we all know that there's been a lot of advancement since then, especially in the field of mental health. And so, we feel that moving forward, we need to try to kind of compensate for it. Would you mind switching the slide? Thank you.
As Aliya said, there is a lot of issues within mental health, within the school system, and we have a big solution theme, if that makes sense. So the theme is that we need a more understanding environment, and there's many ways to create that understanding environment. So the first solution that we came up with was further education for teachers, and we thought of doing a student-led PD because hearing it straight from the students would be a lot more beneficial because the students are the kids that are going through it. So, we thought that that would be a good solution. Our second solution is just having more incentives for teachers to improve, so that can include having further official rules and standards for teachers to achieve. And the second one is student response section evaluations. This was a creative one that we thought of because when administrators come in to evaluate teachers while they're teaching, teachers can put on a different face. So having a student response section would make sure that the teacher feels as if they have to be on their best all the time. And also, a student response section allows teachers to understand if they're not being understanding, so teachers, or students, my bad, can voice if they think a teacher's not being as understanding as they would like. And then, teachers can get that help from administrators on how to improve or from students themselves. And the last one is just inspire more empathy. So this one was a really creative one that we also really enjoyed. One example of this is the sticky note method, and what it is, is that students can write down their assignments and what they did the day before and show it to their teachers so the teachers can sort of take a walk through their daily routine. So that would include if they have chores, if they have to pick up their little brother or sister from school, if they have to have a part-time job. So that just inspires a little bit more empathy and allows teachers to understand what students may be going through. And those are just a few solutions that we came up with.
Hello, everyone. Good morning. My name is Tiara T. Daniels, and today I'm going to be presenting...
Is that your full presentation?
What? I think that was their... Yeah.
That was one part of it, Chairman Taylor. They're going to continue, and I think Sharice will jump in when they conclude. By the way, the first part of it was amazing. I'm loving this.
Okay, okay.
Sharice will jump in when...
Just keep going.
It's done. So far, so great.
Okay, so another group that we did was on restorative justice, and we were on the subset of school climate. If you'd go to the next slide, please? Okay, so I think before, like explaining what restorative justice is and how you can begin creating guidelines to implement it in a competitive school, I think first we wanted to establish kind of what the problem is with the current system, and then we can end its effectiveness. So, right now, restorative justice is pretty much what's used in school systems. So basically, in restorative justice, you see a lot of zero tolerance policies. And so there, you see several studies that demonstrate that most suspensions have not resulted from treatment. But, there's weapons on school premises rather than insufficient making people pregnant and disruptive behavior. So kind of these severe consequences have long-term repercussions. So there's a positive correlation between suspension and expulsion rates, grade retention, dropout rates, contranching, and exchange rates. So there we see that a lot of relationships are strained, and there's a lot of tension between the administration and lack of respect we seem to have with the restorative justice. Okay, so now kind of getting into restorative justice is... So restorative justice is a fairly new kind of system. It's about 40 years old, and it actually comes from, inspired from individual values. So it's like more equitable and respectful alternatives between the practices. So really, like encourage dialogue between stakeholders and keep stakeholders accountable in order to prevent harm to people who live within the school community. So there are six bio components to the program, and those are building relationships, respect of, providing opportunities for equitable dialogue and support for decision-making, involve all those stakeholders, addresses harms, needs, obligations, and helps the conflict to harm, encourages all people responsible. So we can see that it's very much in values, really focused, like, promise to help students and families.
Okay, so now, since I have like kind of compared practices and established that restorative justice practices can be used as like an effective tool to repair harm, I'm going to kind of explain how to effectively implement and kind of the guidelines of restorative justice in schools. So, the first thing to do is to establish a restorative justice team. So kind of each member of the community, a part of this team, and this team is trained specifically to kind of keep people accountable, and so they can include, but not limited to, administration, restorative justice practice facilitators, teachers, students, families, school security officers, support staff, community partners, and municipal programs. There should be restorative justice support. So I think here, the team really is supposed to develop shared values, assess strengths and needs of the specific school. So now going into assessing the needs of the stakeholders. So we kind of developed two questions that we think are really important. When assessing the needs and kind of how we should implement restorative justice, and the first being, what problem has restorative justice created in our community? So I think that kind of creates this sense of kind of unity among that there is a problem and we need to fix it. I mean, it also excludes bias, which we thought was extremely important. And the second question we want to ask is kind of define the role of each stakeholder in implementing and sustaining restorative justice. And we think that this is an extremely important question to ask because it kind of creates a vision and a goal and unifies the entire community in reaching and completing that goal. And so through this, they can kind of continually reflect upon the definitions and kind of either change them if needed but kind of know where they are and where they go. Next slide, please?
Okay, so now, kind of just going from, moving from community to restorative justice practices. In this grid, you can kind of see the difference between restorative and restorative justice, kind of what their two values are. And so as we can see, restorative justice places more emphasis on prevention and establishing really strong relationships. There's a lot of consistency with community building circles and union of school personnel and the number of behavioral incidents we'll reduce. So accountability measures will develop with students' training with heightened values. Okay, so implementing tier-one strategies. So tier-one strategies really just involve the training, and so this includes really all stakeholders, any members of the restorative justice team trained through restorative exercises, and people really share experiences and practices but also learn by observing others, which is kind of, that's what we really try to highlight that because a lot of students and children learn by observing either their peers, either adults, their parents, their families, mentors, to be really done that extremely important. And so giving feedback is key to training. And also, it's another way to hold people accountable to creating an inclusive and a very, like, a good school climate. So allowing trainees to be in the circle of restorative justice supervision. So continually train stakeholders to professional development. We think that's really important to kind of continue this practice and not let it fall off the rails. Next slide, please? Okay, so now implementing tier-two strategies. So tier-two strategies really just involve accountability, as I was talking about. So restorative justice are models that to better serve the community and to hold students accountable, the standards need to be set by community leaders. So not only do you need to hold yourself accountable, but you need to hold others accountable and you need to be able to communicate with others while doing so. So part of community building means you involve and share time resources and with the school. The community building circles lead student input in order for success. Next slide, please? Okay, so now to tier-three strategies. So tier-three strategies is really just focus on the specific individual, and it involves a lot of communication. So schools should have resources and protocols in place for integrating students into the community after a period of absence, for instance, if they've been incarcerated or after a suspension. So the school should have individuals to arrange the student and follow up the students after a period of absence. So this could be a student success team who can meet with a struggling student for like maybe two to six months. They should have mental health resources and SL tier-three resources in place. And what that kind of means is students-centered, maybe student-centered process team, which utilizes support individuals with intensive need and the purpose is to be strength-based, seeking maximum student skills while making the environment adjustment that supports student success. Next slide. And lastly, what we've been kind of talking about, evaluation accountability measures. So you really want to compare passing of data on office schedules, physical alterations, suspension rates, incidents, racial disparities in school discipline, standards, health scores, and transparency. So, and you also want to accordingly survey students, teachers, administrations, everyone regarding how the deal up the school before and after the restorative justice. So that's kind of what we've come up with in the moving after research. We did not get the chance to survey any students because of coronavirus, but I think that's important.
Thank you. Is that the... Is anybody else going to speak?
Yeah, hi, everyone. My name is Miriam, and I'm going to be talking a little bit about... Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So our group took into account student voice. We're going to be presenting about student voice and more specifically diversity and inclusion. You can go to the next slide.
So just... Sorry, could you go to the next slide? Thank you. Thank you. So just to talk a little bit about the progression of our project, we initially wanted to focus on diversity and very specifically choose an aspect of diversity. As we progressed through the project, we realized that we can't really focus on one part of it and not cover all of them because all of them intersect, and every student has a different identity, and some students have multiple identities. So we decided to talk about diversity as a whole and include every single part, including race, sexuality, gender, religion, et cetera. Could you go to the next slide, please? Thank you. So just to introduce myself, my name is Nina Feinstein. I'm a senior at Hall High School, and I'll be going to Brown in the fall. So we just wanted to talk about our personal experiences. I feel like my school has done a good job promoting diversity and inclusivity in terms of student voice. But again, we do feel that there can be improvements. We have an elected Board of Education representative who shows up at the meetings. However, we think it could be improved by giving her voting power just because even though she can be there, she doesn't actually have the ability to like make decisions officially. Also, we have a Safe School Climate Committee, Free and Reduced Lunch Program, and also we have student presentations at teacher meetings, and also a bunch of vocal clubs and social justice clubs, which are supported by the school. However, we hope that there's more funding and investment in these groups because we really think that the key to instilling diversity and inclusivity in every aspect of the educational experience, whether that be academic or extracurricular, it's really important for students to have a say in what's going on. So we really, and most of the time, we rely on teachers volunteering their time to do clubs and stuff, but we really want more time and money invested in that from the school. And also, we hope that students are given more opportunities to lead and run initiatives just because a lot of the time, it's faculty leading initiatives and students sort of volunteering to help. But we want that there to be more of that in the future and for students to actually take the lead. And now Miriam will be sharing her perspective. Could you please go to the next slide? Thank you.
Hi, everyone. So again, I'm Miriam. I'm a senior at Hampden High School. I'm going to be attending Yale in the fall. And similar to Nina, actually, my school really invested in student voice in a few different ways. So I served as a Board of Education student representative, and you know, we have two students who serve on that. And through that, we really were able to bring a lot of issues to the table that weren't considered prior. Right now, we're talking about adding E to the calendar as a day off, being the second district in the state to do so. We successfully passed a class for marginalized students. And, you know, relating back to our overall topic, we're not only talking about student voice, but we're talking how to make sure the most marginalized students in, you know, the aspects of diversity that we covered are accurately represented and able to, you know, voice their opinions on these issues. Another program, we started with student ambassadors, and that was created in response to a lot of the hateful incidents we had in our school. You know, through this, we worked with the Anti-Defamation League. We run seminars, you know, about race and equity, and we think we need more of that. Another one is the Superintendent's Roundtable, where students have the opportunity to speak through the superintendent. There's a lot of really vocal clubs, such as Global Youth Activists, Black and Hispanic Student Union, where students are really able to, you know, run cultural events and really spark that sense of pride, you know, sense of student voice. In terms of negatives and some of the possible improvements, really making sure there's higher receptivity to student voices. And basically, what I mean by that is, a lot of times, students have voices, right? Students are able to petition, they're able to speak to the principal, but sometimes, they're not listened to. And, you know, one example we had with this was during the Board of Education voting on a grading policy during distance learning. You know, the Board of Education representative alongside me, we ran a, you know, survey to talk to students and try to understand, you know, where they were and what the best and most equitable grading policy was, and we felt we weren't listened to. So we ran our own student conference. We had over 1,000 views. We had parents, you know, families, community members, and we need more capacity to have those kinds of conversations where students lead. Another thing like Nina touched on is making sure there's more power to students when it comes to policy, so making sure they have maybe the ability to vote when it comes to Board of Education representatives, and also making sure there's more public and frequent communication. You can move to the next slide, sorry. So in terms of next steps, you know, what we really want to focus on is making sure our schools become less reactive and more proactive when it comes to issues of inequity and inclusion. Some of our suggestions include making sure that there's a lot of student voice on curriculum, school policy, making sure we have student representatives that are consulted in faculty meetings and other events, making sure there's frequent, you know, cultural events, assemblies, spirit days, and making sure there's procedures and infrastructure for responding and reporting hate. And another really important element of this is making sure we have support systems. You know, right now, what's happening with, you know, the murder of George Floyd, a lot of our black students right now are traumatized, a lot of our students of color right now don't know what to feel, and making sure we have support systems that are built into our school where they not only have, you know, support from school psychologists and administrators and whoever else, but they also have the ability to voice their ideas, voice their opinions. How do we do anti-racist work in our schools? And making sure students are at the forefront of that conversation. Another aspect we want to talk about, and Nina will take this one on, is what steps we are taking and we, you know, recommendations we have during COVID-19.
So, with the pandemic that's going on right now, we felt it was important to talk about it because this is obviously a very unique situation. But one thing that we've been seeing is that communities of color have been impacted far more, like, intensely than white communities and rich communities. And we think it's important to address this because currently, with everything that's going on in the school being online, students weren't really consulted in how the academic decisions were made. Obviously, we recognize that this was a very drastic change, and there wasn't a lot of time to talk about it. However, most districts and most students that we've talked to felt that a lot of the decisions were being made behind the scenes with no consultation from students who would really be impacted by it. So our recommendation is to appoint students to task forces and committees regarding the reopening of schools and distance learning because we really think it's important that the people who are making the decisions hear from students of all backgrounds and especially marginalized voices who aren't typically heard. And also, we think that there should be more student and parent surveys regarding academic decisions just because right now, I think people are doing what they think is the right thing or, you know, there's a bunch of analyses going on and research. But we're really missing the key voices on this issue, which are the students who will actually be taking the classes. The students will be returning to school, and there's just not enough research being done on those students and how this, the whole reopening and the distance learning will affect them just because every student lives in a different household. Some people live with abusive parents, some people don't have access to technology, and that's not really being taken into consideration just because school normally equalizes things, but without that building and without going there every day, we're seeing a lot of inequities. So hopefully, we want to thank you for listening to our presentation, and we hope that diversity and inclusivity can be brought to every single aspect of school and education because it's not just a singular issue, it's something that has to be implemented in every part of our education system. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Chair? This is Karen DeVois-Walton. Not a question, but a commendation on the incredible work that was presented here and under unusual circumstances to try to pull it together during the pandemic. I think there's a lot to dig in here around mental health, around restorative justice, and around equity in our schools. So I want to commend the students for bringing this forward.
Sorry, there should be one more group that has to go still, or there should be one more presentation still at the end of that.
Yeah, thank you, Beth.
Hey, please go ahead.
Is the presentation going to be screen shared again? Thank you.
It should be right after this. There it is. Thank you.
Oh, I guess there's...
There's actually two more presentations that are left.
No, there should only be one more left. Yours.
But there's our group, and then Beth is a separate group from us.
Okay.
Okay, so could you go to the next slide, please? So our topic was student voice, and our group members are Sam, and he's a junior at East Hampton High School. I'm Manny, or Emmanuel. I'm a senior at South Windsor. There's Rebecca, who's a senior at Orville H. Platt, and there's Nish, who's not here right now, but he was also part of our presentation with this group. And we were focusing on student voice in our schools. Could you go to the next slide, please? So, originally, Commissioner Cardona made one of the focuses for this school year for SACI to research to be student voice. However, we ran into some issues originally when it came to our surveys because, just because of how everything with COVID-19 worked out. So, we didn't get as many responses as we hoped on our surveys originally, so we relied on some anecdotal evidence and some of our personal experiences within our school community. And we're going to report on that to try to provide perspective on these, on some of these issues or on this topic.
Hi, I'm Sam. I'm a junior at East Hampton High School. So at East Hampton High School, student voice is represented and heard. We have many positions such as class officers and student Board of Education representatives, where students can share their opinions and experiences with educators. However, we do lack a student group, like a student senate, or an ever-elected group. However, we do lack a student group, like a student senate or an ever-elected group where students can come together to form solutions to their issues. But our, on the contrary, our person, for personal issues, the principal has an open door policy. So that means like if anyone has a little issue or a big issue, they can just talk to the principal directly and they'll go from there.
So at South Windsor High School, we, my experience with student voice has been a really important aspect at our high school. My prin, my current principal is the same principal at the, was former, was the former principal at East Hampton High School where Sam went. So a lot of the programs they have at their school, we have in our school as well. So one of the things, our principal has an open door policy. And I think one of the most important things towards student voice that we have instituted is a principal's advisory committee, which meets once a month before school directly with the principal, just to speak about upcoming events that are going on in the school and just to provide student perspectives on things that are, things that are going on in our community. And generally, student voice is just a very important thing for us. We, before, for example, during this entire COVID-19 situation, a lot of schools immediately announced their graduation plans, but I, South, I noticed South Windsor took extremely a long time. Our principal was very careful communicating with students and parents, sending out surveys, meeting with students individually over calls before making final decisions. And they were really, they find it really important to hear feedbacks before they make decisions. And students are also very active at our Board of Education meetings. Nearly every meeting, um, we have two student representatives for the Board of Ed, which I'm one of, and nearly every meeting, there are students that come to give presentations on important events that are going on within the schools. Or for example, last year, we had our tennis team give like a nearly 20-minute presentation about the lack of funding within our tennis committee at the high school. And it's just, it's just, it's just known that our, our Board of Education is a place where students can really display their voice. Next slide, please.
So I go, I go to O-H Platt High School in Meriden. So we have an active student senate with elected representatives. It's changed over the past four years. I've been, I've been in it since freshman year, and so it's kind of changed from year to year. So it suits the school better. So before it was a bit disorganized. And now we have six elected senators for each class that are supposed to represent each class and their concerns. It's a fairly effective body, but most of the student voice problems in our school arise out of students trying to make some sort of change in the school and kind of run into, get tangled in this red tape. So we also have student representatives on our district Board of Ed. I am one of them. But we, we merely relay information about school activities. We don't often get too much of a chance to kind of talk about or give feedback on some of the big issues that the Board of Ed is going to be, like talks about during their meetings. We focus more on kind of like sports games, plays, musicals, things that are going on in the school rather than problems that we're having in the school, which I think could be improved. I think that's true in some other district Board of Eds as for student representatives. I think one of the most critical things to implement, to help student voice is to create a more approachable and transparent platform for students to voice their concerns directly to administrators and the Board of Education without feeling intimidated or ignored. I think a lot of times for students, it can feel very intimidating, especially when we have in-person meetings. You know, now we're obviously having them online, but to stand up in front of a huge group of people and kind of try to talk about what's going on in your school. And a lot of students don't really know how to go about that and how to be able to get their voice in at these Board of Ed meetings. So I think just making it more approachable and less intimidating environment would help a lot of students be able to come to the Board of Ed and talk about what's going wrong in their school and how, what they, what solutions they propose. So these are our recommendations. So Manuel, start with the first one.
Yeah, so our first recommendation, we were saying, we think students should have easy ways to find and talk to administrators. So for example, the principal that both me and Sam had, it's been one of his main priorities is making first students feel comfortable directly talking to him. So we think open door policies and things like principal's advisory groups where students can meet directly with the principal without, you know, having to go through other layers of administration is very important towards student voice.
Then our second recommendation is presenting as how concerns can be presented to the Board of Education so students can feel more comfortable and able to use their voice.
And then our last recommendation is that students and Board of Education members should become better acquainted. A lot of students see their administrators every day in school, so they're pretty familiar with them. But the Board of Education members don't, you don't often see them in the school. A lot of people don't even know who they are. I know, I didn't really know all the Board of Ed members. I knew a few of them, but I didn't know a lot of them until I actually became a student representative on the Board of Education and I saw them every other Tuesday. So I think they should, so I think students and Board of Education members should get to know each other a little bit so they can, they can feel more comfortable being able to bring up some difficult topics or problems in their school and they don't feel as intimidated. This is part of making things a bit more approachable for students. So they're more likely to speak about things. I just think that students should know who, who the people who are making real decisions about the things that go on in their school are. And that's the conclusion of our, yeah.
Thank you all. Does anybody have questions or comments?
There, there's one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This will be the conclusion after this. Thank you.
All right, I misunderstood what you had just said.
Yeah, thank you for having us here today. My name is Beth Christensen. I'm a senior this year at Northwestern Regional High School. And myself, along with my other group members Natalia, Carolyn, and Guido, put together this last section of the presentation. And Carolyn is here today to help me present. So at the beginning of the year, we kind of had a hunch that if you asked students, administrators, and teachers the same questions about how student voice is represented in their school community, you'd probably get three different answers on how each group feels it impacts the school community. So in order to get some quantitative evidence for this, we sent out a statewide survey to students, teachers, and administrators that asked the same question to each group. And we got 250 responses, which allows us to compare the data from those three subject groups side by side to see the discrepancies in how these three groups kind of interpret how student voice is heard in the community. So to start off, we just have a slide about our demographics. So the most, 53.4% of the schools that we surveyed were in rural areas, but then the other half were in suburban and urban. And in terms of the roles that students, that they had in their community, most of it was students and then teachers and then administrators, which was basically reflective of the ratio that would have been in the school anyways. So you can move on to the next slide, please. So our first question was, do you feel that student voice is present in your school community? This is a pretty simple one that we asked the exact same thing to all three subject groups with, and asked them to answer on a scale of one to five, one being strongly disagreed and five being strongly agree. As you can see here, administrators felt that, and teachers felt that their student voice is strongly present in their school community. But when you look at the student perspective, which is the graph all the way on the bottom, the interpretation of how student voice is being present is distributed much more widely. So the, some students felt agreed that student voice was present, but then a pretty decent amount also felt that they're, they strongly disagreed that it was present or they disagreed. So this is clearly a different interpretation than the administrators and teachers have, which is, I think, important to note. Okay, so then the second question was, um, okay. I'm sorry, can you move back a couple of slides? I think you just skipped ahead a little bit. Okay, the next one, please. Sorry. So how much do you feel that student voice impacts school community? This was another one that was asked to all three groups in the exact same way. And you kind of see the same pattern where administrators and teachers think that it impacts the school community a lot, where students are much more spread out into, it doesn't impact at all to, it impacts pretty often. The most common response here and in the last question was neutral, which we kind of have an explanation for why so many students might have chosen neutral that we're going to share a little bit later on in the presentation. But again, here's the same pattern where students are interpreting how their voice impacts school community, much different than how teachers and administrators are. So the next one is about how student voice influences administrator decisions, teacher decisions, and how students feel that their input, their input is considered in making school decisions. And again, it's basically the same pattern where students feel that they are much less represented and impactful in their voice than administrators or teachers feel that they are. So the next question revolved around, um, teachers taking into consideration student life when making deadlines, which all of the administrators were supportive of, which is good to hear. But the results on the survey are almost, between teachers and students are almost inverses of each other, where teachers say that they are creating, taking into account student life almost all the time. And students are saying that most of the time that they don't feel student taking into account and creating deadlines at all, which is a huge problem because that tells us that there is a lot of conflict between deadlines and major events that are going on in student life. And is clearly kind of a lack of communication between these two groups. I can move to the next slide, please. Um, so this is about teacher evaluations and planning classes for the next semester. So 80% of administrators said that they do take into consideration student voice when evaluating teachers, which was reassuring to hear, but I can say from personal evidence that, um, I have never been asked really about teachers by administrators. So I don't know how they're getting this evidence, but 80% say that they are. And the question to teachers was, do you consider student feedback on your class when planning it for the next semester? And students were asked, do you feel that teachers take student opinion into consideration when planning classes? This is kind of a similar pattern to the last graph where the students say, not really, and the teachers say, all the time. So, uh, again, it's kind of a discrepancy in communication, I guess, between those two groups. So the next question was a yes or no answer, and it was simply, do you feel that there's an adequate amount of outlets for student voice throughout schools in the district? 70% of administrators said no. 93% of the teachers said yes, and 66% of students said no. So administrators and students both said there is not enough representation for student voice or outlets for it in their district. But I'm not, in my own personal school community, I'm not seeing a lot of action to try to change this on either end of that equation. So I think that's definitely something that should be highlighted and kind of brought attention to. So the last two questions on our survey were free response. So the first one was on current outlets. And students were just asked to say what their current outlets for student voice were. And the most common answer was student council, student government, sports, clubs, class officers, teachers, and a representative on the Board of Education. And while those are all great outlets, it doesn't really allow for like a mass input from all students. So there's no like student-wide survey every year to kind of evaluate how the school is doing. These are more niche groups, like student council. You have to apply to get onto it. So it's people who are really want to be involved. And even then, if you're on these groups, you may be expressing your voice, but people mainly educators might not be listening to what you have to say. So that's, um, could be an issue with these types of expressions. Yeah, so, um, the second type of free response was just, do you have any additional information you want to share with us? And the most common response to this question, which we received, is summarized in this quote from one that I took from our survey. And it said that, I feel the school needs to have an overall improvement in truly listening to the student body as a whole. I feel that most student representation is for those in good academic standing, while others' opinions and voices get cast aside. And this was kind of why we thought so many people in, students especially, chose neutral on the survey option because they feel that some people are represented, but others aren't. So they just kind of went for a neutral option in, um, when asked about student voice. But I feel like this is a huge problem because those who are in good academic standing is, that's really a subjective term that's up to the interpretation of administrators or teachers, and it's not taking into account those who might be struggling or have other issues going on outside of school. And I think that's a big problem that should be addressed. Then there were other, another popular response was, we don't have a student voice at all. And that's pretty disappointing to hear from these schools that anyone would feel like they don't have a voice or are not going to be considered in making decisions at their school that is going to directly affect them. But you can move on to the next slide, please.
Uh, hi, my name is Carolyn, and after analyzing all of the data, I thought it would be a good idea to look for resources that might help add student voice into schools. So one of the organizations that I came across was a website and it was called Up for Learning. And it was just a great resource to look at how they were actively trying to implement into the school systems and they promote shared responsibility between teachers and students, strengths and focusing on those and just having open dialogue, which is something that a lot of the groups have mentioned today. And it's, I just think it's important that Connecticut schools might try and look at this resource and look at other resources that might help try and add student voice into their schools. You can move to the next slide. So lastly, I just wanted to look at a school in Vermont that had a lot of student voice and the kids felt that they had this student voice, which was different and unlike our surveys that we took where the students said that they did not feel that they had any outlets for their student voice. So this one school that I researched about, they helped in all aspects of their school day, which is important because they're the ones going through the day. So I think it's important that we emulate what they're trying to do and just having an open communication between students and the administrators.